Good evening, welcome to the September Board Meeting of the Lake Mills Board of Education. I'm Rick Mason, the President of the Board. And our mission statement is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Could we rise and do the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to call the meeting to order? Can we have roll call, please?
Don Delaney?
Here.
Rachel Davies?
Here.
Robert D'Imperio?
Here.
Donna Thomas?
Here.
Richard Mason?
Here. Verification of meeting notice?
On August 31st, it was placed in the Lake Mills leader as well as posted at the library post office in Bank of Lake Mills. On September 7th, we updated the agenda to include another policy committee, set of proceedings from that. We added a discussion of board goals by Dr. Mason. And we had a typo that we fixed. And we also learned that Blaze Knippel would be our student representative, so we added his report to the agenda as well. And then it was reposted.
All right, thank you. Any agenda revisions or approval? Revisions?
I would like to add one item tonight. We had two resignations this morning, and so I'd like to add an item to approve those resignations so that we could very quickly post those and move forward with filling those positions.
Okay, so you want to add two additional items?
They would fall in the same. They're both support staff resignations.
All right, can we have a motion, please?
I'll move to approve the amended agenda.
Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Same sign? Okay. Community input? Do we have any community input? Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Brad Klotz, Lake Mills Education Association Vice President. And the LMEA and LMESP are pleased at another great start to the school year. And we look forward to working with our leaders, including those in new administrative roles. We really enjoyed seeing many community members, board members and staff at Wisconsin Public Education Network Summer Summit, and appreciate the opportunity extended to earn professional development points by attending that. Many people expressed their enthusiasm about what they learned and were energized by attending it. Listening to Wisconsin Assembly Representative Joel Kittens and Chris Taylor discussing school funding in Wisconsin was very informative, as was the Wisconsin premiere of the film Backpack Full of Cash. And we would encourage anyone to see this film and watch for screenings in our area. And to also attend next year's Summer Summit. Our public schools are a vital resource to our communities, and Wpen is helping people advocate for public schools all over the state. Finally, reconnecting with our coworkers at the Back to School Social was a fun and lively way to kick off the new school year. Many thanks to Superintendent Pam Strike for organizing that.
All right, thank you, Brianne. Okay, we welcome Blaze Knippel.
Do you want me to stand up there?
No, you can go right here.
Okay.
And we welcome to the board, he's going to be the student representative this year. So Blaze?
Hi, I'm Blaze Knippel. I'm your new Student Council President. I'm excited to hold this position and plan on being an active president with some fresh new ideas. This year, homecoming is extremely early, so all the grades have already picked their themes and colors, and the planning has begun. The overall theme for the school is classic movies, so the seniors have Charlie and the Chocolate Factory, the juniors have Jumanji, the sophomores have Wizard of Oz, and the freshmen have Grease. We have a ton of events coming up that we're very excited about, but one new idea I wanted to share with the board tonight is how the winner will be decided for the window competition. So as many of you know, the grades compete against each other through different activities homecoming week. One of those activities is decorating the windows downtown. This year, I wanted the community to somehow become more involved, so I came up with the idea of donation boxes outside each business for each grade. Then people can vote for their favorite window by putting money into the corresponding donation box. Then that money will be donated towards disaster relief for Hurricane Harvey and Hurricane Irma victims. Other groups throughout the school are also extremely busy. Tennis, cross-country, volleyball and football are all off to a fantastic start. Volleyball and football are both undefeated in the regular season and will be a force to reckon with in the Capital North. The preparation for the Fall Musical has also begun. The audition for roles were back in the beginning of August, so all the lead and supporting roles have started rehearsing and memorizing their parts. The show this year is The Drowsy Chaperone, which is a comedy. Speaking for the cast, we hope to provide the community with a very funny and entertaining show. Transitioning to link crew, they had training and orientation day with this year's freshmen, and I can say very confidently that it couldn't have gone better. The freshmen were engaged and opened a conversation which makes me hopeful for the future of Lake Mills High School. Lastly, show choir has been hard at work over the summer and has its first morning rehearsal this Wednesday, which all the members are very excited about. So as you can see, Lake Mills High School students are off to a busy start, and we're ready to surpass expectations and have a groundbreaking year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Blaze. And speaking of play practice, Blaze is off to play practice right now. So, Dr. Delaney correspondence? Do you have any?
We have one note of thanks from the family of Joan Simden for the gift in the memory of Joan Simden.
Good, thank you. Mr. D'Imperio, facilities update?
The Facilities Committee meet met on August 30th. And at the meeting, Ms. Bauer, Ms. Brockert, Ms. Strike, Mr. Simden, Dr. Mason and myself, we addressed two different issues. The first was to have some more conversation about the play and recreational area at the middle school. Ms. Bauer gave us a recap of her earlier assessment concluding that one of the best things to do would be to provide more hard surface for the students to use during the time that they were outside. We looked at the tennis court issue and made a determination that in the near term, it would be good to be able to use that court for the students' recreational purposes for this year. Well, some of the deficiencies would require a little more thinking and more analysis. We're going to be consulting with the Rettler Corporation, who is a consultant for athletic facilities, to determine, to get some ideas from them. There may be some longer-term solutions, hoping that we can be able to use those tennis courts, both as tennis courts for the school and the community, as well as place space for the students. The second item that we looked at is a part of our evaluation of our long-range plan. Mr. Simden had provided an update on the roof condition on this building. The other buildings being relatively new, that isn't an issue yet. But at this building, we have reprioritized based on the condition, and there are several roof sections that we are going to be recommending that they be addressed very soon. There is an agenda item later tonight that specifically addresses that. So, okay. With that, we stopped.
Questions?
Anybody?
All right. Policy update. Policy Committee comprised of Dr. Delaney and Mrs. Strike and myself met on August 16th and August 30th. And there's a couple items that we're redoing all of the policies and bringing them up to date and so on. A couple items came up that we need to kind of kick around as a board and talk about. And the first one is, the district has policy, and we set that, and everybody knows that. And then there's the idea that it has to be carried out, okay? And that's kind of administrative guidelines or rules that the administration puts together to carry out those policies. And we've kind of combined the two, and they should really be separated, is what our consultant is saying. So, we're in the process of doing that, correct?
So, the one question that arises, in the past, you had approved every single policy and every single rule. And so it was brought before the board in two readings. What Neola recommends to be more flexible and to be more timely is that the board approves the policies and then gives the district administrator, me or my staff, the ability to write the guidelines. And we keep you informed of those guidelines, but you don't necessarily have to vote on every single one of the guidelines. So, that's what they recommend, but that's different than you've done in the past. So I wanted to make sure that you were comfortable with that, and that is reflected in one of our policies that's actually under the duties of the district administrator. So I wanted you to discuss that a little bit.
So does that make sense? We're all on the kind of the same page, or do you want to discuss that a little bit?
That's the way that the legislature follows writing laws. They write the law, the DPI writes the administrative rules, and we implement it.
Right, right.
So, I mean, this is pretty standard procedure, what you're talking about. And then there's probably some exhibits with some of these, too.
Sure. Any other comments on that?
And most of our existing policies won't be changed substantially from the way they've already been approved.
Right.
As our current policies.
They're pretty much the same. And you're going to be seeing those over the next few months, right?
Well, they're available right now under the policy tab on your board docs, under consideration. They're all there now. And as a committee, we've gone through every single one.
So if that's okay, we can go ahead with that. All right, all right. The second policy that we need to discuss as a board is if there is an emergency of some sort that needs immediate attention by the board, the procedure is that the board president can call each individual board member and get their feedback on whatever the emergency situation is. And that's a little bit different than before, rather than holding a meeting and getting everybody together, the president would be able to call each individual member and get their input. And if, we can talk about that, too, if that makes sense to everybody.
It makes sense to me, but I'm wondering if it passes muster with the statutes that govern how we operate.
Well, I think that one thing that would happen is if there would be an emergency, and it was between meetings, Dr. Mason, in this instance, could call the meeting, and if someone couldn't make it, they could call into that meeting and hear it. So it's really more about voting from a distance rather than being physically present at the meeting.
I think you've got to check with legal counsel, and whatever they say, we do.
Yeah, and this has gone through legal counsel, but the board has to say that it's okay that someone can call in to vote. Their recommendation is that, I mean, the way that this was written, a board member at any time that was absent could call in. And the policy committee wasn't comfortable with that, and so they wanted to restrict it to only emergency meetings that were held off-schedule. So it's really about being able to call in and not be physically present during the board meeting.
Emergency meetings.
But only emergency.
Emergency, yeah.
But that meeting would actually be convened.
Yes.
And there might only be one person, and everybody else is by phone.
If everyone were...
Right, I mean, that's...
Yes.
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 If that makes sense. And, you know, I don't foresee it happening very often. I mean, or seldom, or never.
Because right now, if a person is absent, we might not have a quorum. Or, I mean, you know, if people were absent, we wouldn't have a quorum, so we couldn't have an emergency meeting if it were needed.
Well, this would be in cases of emergency meetings where no quorum is available.
Yes.
Okay. Whatever the legal counsel says, you'll do.
Yeah, they agree with that. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. The third item that we talked about was weapons on school property. We already have a policy that prohibits weapons on the school grounds by students. Either loaded, unloaded, stored, and as a hunting item in their trunks or anything like that in their locked cars, they cannot bring weapons onto the school property. The question is, do you want the same level of prohibition for staff as well? In other words, do you want to prohibit staff from bringing any weapons to school grounds, storing them in their trunk, in their locked cars, or not? That's the question.
You're asking us to make, I think, a decision off the top of our head at one meeting. This is pretty deep stuff when you're talking about that. Whatever happened, have any of you heard what happened with that we were going to teach a class in guns at school? Is that still in the works, or did that fall by the wayside?
We have...
What do you know, Rick?
We have a club.
What?
We have a shooting club.
Yeah, but I'm talking about in the budget, there was something where we were going to be able to teach a class in gun safety during the school day, and did that fall by the wayside? Does anybody remember what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I remember that.
Remember, of course.
You do? Okay. Well, did that fall by the wayside? Because that would make a difference, too. I mean, if you're going to teach a class with guns, you're going to have to have a gun to use, aren't you?
It was going to be permissive. It would allow school districts, if they chose to do it, could do that.
Which could play into this policy.
Any of these things can be superseded by administrative approval. For, you know, if somebody wanted to bring an antique rifle to a social studies class, it is already permissible for the building administrator to allow that.
So, this is a general kind of thing where, you know, it prohibits them from having guns in their car. We already had that in the policy in different places. The question is, do we want to extend the policy to staff or not? That's the question.
So, this is really, so because we don't allow weapons on school property, like on the playground or inside the school, we're talking about the parking lots?
Yes.
For students.
For students.
And now should that be extended?
And now should it be extended to staff, but not parents? Okay?
Should it?
That's another item, yeah.
The whole nother issue.
Parents.
This sounds like a...
This is, this would be, the example that always comes up with this is that a staff member goes hunting in the morning.
Right.
And unloads their gun, puts it in a gun case, locks it in the trunk. The drug dogs come that day. They smell it. We do a search. We find this loaded gun. Would that be grounds for discipline, including dismissal, because they had an unloaded, stored gun in their trunk?
If it's against our policy, it is.
Well, that's what we're talking about. What's our, do you want that in our policy?
We don't want alcohol in their cars, do we? I mean, so they stop down to the QuickTrip and get some alcohol for later in the evening and leave it in their car. I mean...
But we're talking about extending it to staff. We already have it in policy for kids.
Yeah, well, I don't think staff should have it in their cars either, myself.
Well, that's the discussion.
I mean, I got to say this, too. I wouldn't have said this, but when I was recently up north, too, that the judges in Chippewa County carry guns under their robes. And I was astounded by that. I don't think that's right either.
Under considered weapons.
I don't think people should have guns at school.
Has this been a problem?
Or just what the law says. What does the law say? No guns on school premises? What's the law say?
Yes.
Well, then, that's for everybody, isn't it?
Was there an exception carved out for parking lot and weapons in locked cars?
It's not specifically stated for locked cars.
Okay. Because I think that the example that I have heard, when you mentioned parents, was that the parent driving their child to school with a gun in the car, locked in the trunk, and then they get stopped and, you know, arrested. I mean, that's always, you know, that example seems to come up a lot. So, I don't know, I'd like to think about this.
Yeah, I thought you said that in the beginning.
All right, we can do that. And again, these policies will be brought up for approval.
So what we're really deciding, and nobody has weapons on school grounds, or just the students, or just in the school building? What is it?
Right, that's what we're deciding.
Okay.
So this is about, this is about staff members, and if they could be disciplined to the point of dismissed for having a unloaded, properly-stored, something in their locked trunk.
All right.
Is there any history to this?
Not here, no.
Okay. No, this came up through Neola?
Right, as we went through the hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of policies, there were many questions. And so as the policy committee, we went through all the different questions, and we reflected the answers based on policy, existing policy. But this question has never been discussed here.
Right.
And so the committee said, we should bring this one to the whole board and get a sense of what the board is. Okay. Okay.
Okay, we'll take a look at that. And the last thing is the goals that the board had for fiscal, or for the year 2016-17. They're attached to your agenda there, and you can look at those and see how they've been updated. There's four areas: student achievement, communication with all stakeholders, facilities, and fiscal responsibility. So it falls into four areas. And those four areas will be continued as the same for next year, for this, for the 17, 18 school year. But you can read those, any of that update, on how those goals were achieved or reached. Any questions on those, you know?
And I guess, in my mind, these are ongoing, and will continue through the next school year as well.
Just a couple updates before I give you just a real brief presentation on that grading practices document that I gave you guys last month. A good start to the year. Through the in-service before the kids got here, our staff participated in a workshop that focused on increasing capacity for our staff members to create an affirming, welcoming environment for all students. Another update on our enrollment, our enrollment is 432 for this year. Incoming class of 129 for freshmen, 94 sophomores, 102 juniors and 107 seniors. We have 19 new students into the building and then 13 transferred out from the previous year. Our interact club and their food pantry, the Mill, is hopefully going to be up and running by middle of October, end of October. And it's really, really student-driven through Ellen Andrew, the interact advisor, on working to create a space at the district office for the Mill. Right now, they're working on, through the second harvest, on locating food, getting more donations for the incoming food in the fall, later in the fall, and then marketing materials to promote the Mill as well in the next several weeks. So, that's one thing going on as well with all the stuff that Blaze talked about. Also, we're introducing our CAT Creed, which is our PBIS Behavior Matrix, to our students. I've talked about it in each of our class meetings the last several days. Our teachers and each of their advisories have gone over it, and I did bring an example for you. If you want to just pass it around. It's kind of a poster, basically just common expectations in the building that really, I think, establishes our, kind of the mainstay of our culture here, other than the relationships that our students have with teachers. But for new students and/or, you know, incoming freshman class, you know, as simple as walking on the right side of the hallway, right? You'd be amazed that the first couple of days with the freshmen coming in, that they were just like all over the place and just kind of learn to move over and walk to the right side. But I'll pass this around and take a peek at it.
Thank you.
So we have one of those in each of the classrooms, and working on getting, waiting for some frames for some bigger ones in the hallways. We're going to introduce this school-wide together in an assembly this Thursday, where our Student Council will, they made some videos on some of the pillars of our matrix. And as far as little entertainment value, I have a hypnotist coming as well on Thursday with the students and staff, so it should be a good time. Blaze talked about homecoming and all the activities, very, very busy place. I'd invite you to, we're going to dedicate or open up the brand-new gym floor tomorrow night at our girls volleyball game between Lakeside and Lake Mills. And I know our students are pretty pumped for it and members of the community. And I'll recognize the official sponsors of the floor before the varsity game, which is scheduled to start around 6:30, but usually it's a little bit later. So we'll recognize them in between the JV and the varsity matches tomorrow night. Question?
Yeah. The Mill, will the kids who are putting together the marketing materials or whatever, will they offer like a list of things they're looking for so that we can start promoting it on, you know, as parents on Facebook with other parents and things like that?
Yep, they're kind of in the initial stages with homecoming, everything else going on. It's, I would bet we'd see more stuff after homecoming is over.
Like the specific things that they would want?
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
If you remember that grading practices document that I handed out to you last month, I just wanted to talk briefly kind of on the kind of the whys about what we did. It was, the grading practices, the effective student feedback, is something that I think our staff's been working on before I got here. And we really made it a focus last year, working through our staff and building leadership team, on creating this document. And really, when you look at the document, it's a lot of things that are not brand-new to this building. It's, a lot of the staff have been doing some of those things. But again, we wanted to make it consistent and building-wide. So, you know, I wanted to start off with, our mantra here at the high school is every kid, every day. Right? It's preparing, very similar and goes along with our district mission statement, preparing all students for all of tomorrow's opportunities, every kid, every day. And we talk about that with our staff throughout the year. And our job is to get our kids college and career-ready. And, you know, what are we trying to do here on a daily basis? We're trying to affect student achievement in a positive way. And we want our kids to demonstrate learning. We want our kids to get mastery of the content. And feedback, grading practices, can be a tool, right? So what does the research say? Well, accurate feedback, specific and timely, and timely could mean many things, one of the most effective ways to affect student performance, right? So, being that said, one of our main focuses was grading. And best practice equals results. We were hoping and seeing through the research that effective student feedback reduces grade inflation, which we really did not have a problem here at the high school. If you look back at the graduating class, the top 30 kids, or the top 30 as far as their class ranking for GPA, their average ACT score was 25.47. So that tells us we're doing something good as far as our grading and student achievement based upon standardized testing, right? We're doing a good job. So, goals is reduce grade inflation, graduates more successful after they leave here, increase in student achievement, and reduce the failure rate. Expectations and use of these practices as we get into the first year of having these out. out. I really, Abraham Lincoln is one of my heroes, and I talk about, you know, one of his quotes is, "My great concern is whether, not whether you have failed, but whether you are content with your failure." And we talk about this with the staff, is with any type of new things that pop up or anything that's really specific and as far as grading, or curriculum, or content, or instructional practice, take risks. Right? It's okay to fail, but what are you going to do after that? So I think this is a learning year for us with this. This document is not set in stone. It's something that can change over time. And that's one of our building goals, is to look at this document and make changes if necessary. Some of the practices that we looked at that are located in the document itself. The first one is the school-wide grading scale. And this is not something new. Same percentages, but again, consistent, communicate to the entire school community, that's where our grading scale is, as far as percentages and the use of the AF scale. Clear performance standards. Clear learning targets, right? Our teachers are supposed to have clear learning targets, visible or communicated verbally every class period, right? And the ability to assess students' progress towards that through formative, multiple, multiple formative assessments and some assessments as far as students' mastery of those targets. And really, that should be done on a daily basis. So again, one of our consistent practices. Formative summative grading, this is probably, might be one of the bigger challenges for us this year, is that the majority of the grade, hopefully at least 90% of the grade, is based upon summative assessments. That summative assessments are the primary source to calculate grades. And then formative, not more than 10%. Again, the idea is that the formative work is the practice, the formative work is setting up the ability for the students to fail, to relearn, for the teacher to reteach, right? To get to that point of close to mastery as we can possibly get. Reassessment of summative assessments, again, the focus is learning. Okay? And the idea of this is that depending on the department or individual teacher criteria that will be communicated to the students, is that there will be one reassessment opportunity available per summative assessment. Again, like I said, department or teacher criteria-based and communicated. And then the idea is that that most recent score will replace the older one, because it's the most updated measurement of the student's progress towards the learning target. Does that make sense? And again, that's communicated through the department or the individual teacher syllabi. Will there be issues with that? Probably, right? And we're going to work through it. But I think the ability for students to show evidence of relearning or new learning to that specific teacher, I think it's a good idea that they get a second shot at that. Attendance is not part of the grade. I think that was pretty common amongst the building. And the idea of extra credit, if it's not showing progress towards a learning target, should not be in the grade. Right? If a kid brings a block, a box of Kleenex, right, you shouldn't get points that are in your grade. Number seven, assessing individual achievement versus group work. Again, cooperative learning is good. I just, you know, if you're going to look at an individual grade for the student, that it should be an individual grade. So I think you can do cooperative work, but the idea is that the students still should get an individual grade for their work, not a group grade. Many times, I know when I was a teacher, you do a group work and one or two people do everything, and the other two people kind of just ride along and get the same grade. That's not right. So really focusing on individual achievement versus group work if there is a collaborative activity. Missing work, late work and zeros. We really thought that, you know, this one would be challenging as well. I'll preface that due dates and deadlines, I think, are extremely important for students and teachers to manage their workload. And I think there's research on both sides of this where that students can turn in their work all the way to the end of the semester, but I, you know, and through Garth Larson and some of the other research that we looked at, that that's not really practical for students and especially teachers as far as kind of managing things as far as their workload. So the idea is that the late work will be accepted up to the point of the end of the unit. And if the work is not in, then that zero or that missing work will be calculated into the final grade. Does that make sense? Yeah?
So for full credit or partial credit?
Full credit.
Okay.
Trying to get away from the idea of partial credit, like where are they at as far as their progress towards the learning targets or the essential questions or whatever. And like I said, as far as the important due dates and deadlines, we all have TPS reports to get in, and you've seen Office Space, but.
Mm-hmm.
A little bit before, you know, we move on, our teachers really look at this as, you know, before each lesson, we talk about, the teachers should know these, answers to these questions before each unit, right? What do we expect students to learn? What research strategies will we use to promote the learning? How will we know, right? What kind of assessments are you going to utilize? How are you going to know if they've learned it? What are you going to do if they do not learn it? And then what are you going to do if they already know it? Right? So that's really the foundation of a lesson. Okay? And we preach that to our staff. And again, it's kind of the idea that we hold dear on a daily basis. So that's the foundation. If you don't know those answers as a teacher, your foundation is built upon a house of cards. Right? So that's what we look at. Lastly, with all this, again, it's a learning year for us. Still, preface, everything that we do is teachers and our relationships, which I think is the number-one thing that we do here in this building. And I think our students would say the same thing.
Questions? Thank you. Mrs. Bauer? Do you have a PowerPoint or anything? No?
No, we have a rule at the back table, three minutes tops. And Kale just smashed it.
I gave him permission. I gave him my time.
All right. All right.
So I'm going to try to remember, it was, it's really nice to have Pam put out some different things that you guys want to hear about or should hear about. I'm going to try to follow in the same order that Kale did with some of the things. In terms of enrollment, we are 20 students out, 23 students in, for a total at the middle school this year of 477 students. I wanted to, oh, he talked about. I'm just going to briefly hand out and talk to you about our school store, is what we're calling it, at the middle school. So this is located in our back. It's kind of the teacher's lounge area, but it's, since it moved down by the office, the teachers don't necessarily use it as a lounge area. What we talked about when Pam first brought this to us with the bags that the elementary takes home, we kind of tried to balance it between what the elementary was doing, what the high school was doing, and what our middle schoolers need. It feels that sometimes little kids still get a lot of stuff taken care of, and they may not have food, but they usually have some of the other essentials that they need. High schoolers can kind of go out on their own and get the things that they need. But our middle schoolers, it felt to us, to really make sure that our students can participate every day in our community, they need to have several different essentials taken care of besides food. So you can see in the picture, we have our school store divided into three different areas. We have school supplies, that's closest to you. We have food, which we've lined up with second harvest, and I am now officially, have my official certificate that I can store food for second harvest. So we are already getting a lot of things in from second harvest. We already have a room full of different things and this. We've had 30 students utilize this room already this year. And then the back space will be for clothing and personal care items. And that includes everything from feminine care products to toothbrushes, toothpaste, shampoo, soap, and then we have clothing. And what we're trying to aim for is, Mrs. Stewart, our guidance counselor, really understands what kids need for clothing. We're aiming for leggings for girls and sports shorts for boys, because boys don't ever, when you have jeans, you have to have every single size in the world to be able to provide those kind of things for kids. And different things we're looking for, hats and mittens. Middle schoolers don't really wear coats anymore. They wear hoodies or pullovers or whatever, so we're sticking with more that. When, since this is on TV tonight, I do want to mention this, there's a lot of social pressure that comes along with what students wear and what they don't wear in the middle school, and I'm trying to put this politically correctly. And when we receive donations from the community, sometimes students get questioned like, "Oh, that used to be my sweatshirt." And so, we are really trying to avoid any donations that come from students who are still in the middle school, because their kids outgrew it or whatever. And we are trying to stick to just those items, so we have enough items for everyone and don't come across storage issues. So we can put it out if people are interested, and we're looking for, especially with socks and underwear and hats and mittens, we are really looking for new things for our students. So that is our school store in a nutshell, and so far, so good. Right now, we're doing, I would call it, soft-marketing with it, just noticing when kids need something and saying, "Hey, why don't you ask, go up to the office and ask to go to the school store," as opposed to putting it out to everybody at once. One of the things that's in the food thing is Pop-Tarts, and some of our middle school boys would go and take pockets full of Pop-Tarts if they could. But we're really emphasizing the community aspect of it. Take what you need and need what you take in there. So, and it seems to be, they all grasp it. They've been great. So really appreciate all the work that everybody's put in to get that going. And here's our matrix. Melissa made me make sure to say that our posters are as big as Kale's. This is just a smaller example. So this is our matrix. Same kind of concept. We were disappointed to hear that kids don't walk on the right side, because we really tried to focus on that last year, and so they're coming in. I think it's because you guys made the middle school hallways too big. It's, there's just a lot of meandering room. So, but we have some, now we're working, focusing on before and after-school, hallways, cafeteria, restroom, recess, bus, and school events, so generally public spaces right And then we have signs posted throughout the building and in the cafeteria. And we have our little symbol here, I don't know if you come into the middle school, some days we'll all be wearing these t-shirts. We have t-shirts with "Be," and it's "Be respectful and responsible to self, school, and society." So "Be" is kind of our little marketing piece on that one. And then just two things that I want to brag about. We have been implementing CPM, and we're really, that's our new math program, that's kind of project-based learning. And it, when I walk around the middle school now, I'm like, I feel like we've arrived. It feels like every single classroom is now engaged in that collaborative process, even though they get individual grades at the high school, we really work a lot on collaboration and the creativity that comes from co-creating stuff. So I've been in every math classroom this last week, and I'm just in awe. All the teachers are fully behind it, and along paired with Alex, it is a seamless program, and I really appreciate all that they do. I also want to mention that this Wednesday, sticking with our community theme, we analyzed at the beginning of the year, our staff analyzed a bunch of samples from student writing. We asked a group of kids a couple of years ago about bullying in the classroom. We've taken, we took a look at some student essays, and we also looked at the student newspaper from last year. And part of the thing that students are concerned about, it happens to come almost always through the dress code, is about sexual harassment and those types of things. So Jefferson County has started a new program. It's, I think it's only two years old, and they provide support for students and teachers around sexual abuse and harassment. So we are going to have a representative from PATA come in with Officer A. Strike this Wednesday and talk to our staff about what sexual harassment and sexual assault and domestic abuse looks like. And then they offer classes for our middle school students, all for free, on what is a healthy, what does a healthy relationship look like? What do I do if I'm in trouble? How do I stay safe on social media? So once she comes in and talks to the staff, she said she almost always has staff that want her to come in and do some mini lessons with the students. So we're looking forward to that, and Officer A. Strike is really looking forward to communicating with our teachers about those things. So that will be this Wednesday. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson.
Good evening. An update on our student enrollment this year. Right now, we have 614 students, 4K through 4th grade in our school. Within the building, kindergarten through 4th grade, we have 525 students. We had 44 students transfer out from last year to this school year, and 58 new students enroll. To break that down a little bit, we have 24 new kindergarten students and 89 4K students this school year. The other update that I wanted to talk about is our weekend meals program. This is, I believe, our third year of the weekend meals program. We had invites go out at the end of last week, and we ordered new bags for the program, multicolored bags that will be going out to students, and then a little bit smaller bag for our kindergarten students. We had some feedback that the bags were too big for the kindergartners as they were carrying those home. Mrs. Coyman and Mrs. Hanson are once again teaming together, the food pantry and the school district, to supply food for the meal bags. PBIS update, we have been working on PBIS for several years now. I believe this is the fourth year that we have been undergoing, working on our school expectations and the matrix that the high school and middle school shared with you. So this year, in order to bring a spotlight back to that, at our back-to-school night, we had a scavenger hunt for our families, that they were able to go around the school and as a family, talk about our school rules and expectations and some of the common areas, like the cafeteria and the playground, introductions to our buddy bench and problem-solving station outside. And then we have some updated posters around the school, and then these were the bookmarks that our students took home after the scavenger hunt was complete. And then a couple of fun updates. We had an author visit on Friday. Greg Forbes, who's the author of The 30 Lessons in Silhouette Man, came to talk to all of our students about our theme this year, Let Kindness Shine. And we have three kind of prongs to that theme that we're going to be working on, and he was able to give a keynote speech to all of our students, talking about, thinking about our own personal gifts. So all of our students thinking about what they have to give to this world. Gifts of others, building a bridge between themselves and other people, and understanding what the gifts are of their classmates, of their teachers, of the other people within our school community. And then finally, gifts for others. So thinking about service projects and things that we can be doing throughout the year. From there, from that all-school assembly, he went into the grade levels, 1st grade through 4th grade, and read a new, it's not released yet, edition of a picture book of the first 30 lessons for the students. And then the students went back to their classrooms to think about what are their gifts, the gifts of others, and the gifts that they want to give to each other. So it was a great way to kick off the school year and this big theme that we have. And he also met with 4th grade ambassadors, so a group of 4th graders had lunch with him as kind of a special leadership group to be able to continue this message forward through the rest of the school year. And then finally, tonight, we had our harvest party at the school garden. Our wellness coalition here in Lake Mills came together with Chef Jason. He He took produce from our school garden, made fabulous dishes for all of us to come together and feast on tonight, a potluck-style dinner for our school community. It was a beautiful night for the harvest party and a celebration of all of the hard work of our volunteers and our students who have been putting forth the effort to make the school garden what it is today. And it's beautiful out there. If you get a chance this week to come and take a look, the garden is in really great shape. We've had volunteers throughout the summer canning and preserving the produce so that Mrs. Coyman can use it in our food service program this fall. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bauer?
Brown.
No. Brown. We had Bauer already, so.
Oops. So I just wanted to tell you a little bit just about what will be happening in the special ed world for the next couple of months. I shared a brief video link on Board Docs for you on our reading drives assessment, our reading drives achievement procedural self-assessment. So every five years, each district is meeting to do, to participate in a self-assessment around special education and procedural items in that. And this is our year, so by the end of November, actually mid-November, we will have all of that taken care of and sent into DPI in order to get some feedback from them. And the self-assessment team will comprise of both special education teachers and regular education teachers, so. All right. Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Silverood.
Hi. So you had a couple of attachments under my name. And the first one, well, I don't know what order they were in, but one of them was the CPM parent handout. And I know that Mrs. Bauer already talked a little bit about CPM tonight, but this was the pamphlet that went to all parents at open house in 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. So parents could pick it up. One of the nice things, my daughter left her homework assignment at school this weekend and she was in a fit last night when it came time to do her math homework. And I said, okay, let's go online. Let's find it. And so the parents have the login site right here. She couldn't print out the worksheet because we don't even have a printer at home, but she could take and she could do her homework on a loose-leaf piece of paper and she had it done because every child has access to all of their work online. The other thing that this offers students and parents is homework help. It doesn't give them every single answer and every single problem, but it allows them to say, hey, I'm struggling with this and some of the problems are there with help guides on it. So it was pretty easy to find as a parent who didn't even have my pamphlet at home. Granted, I knew it was CPM.org, if you can just remember that, that was pretty easy. But my daughter knew her login, she knew how to get in. Mr. Hickstrom had already done that with her and she was able to complete her homework with forgetting it, which I think is a very awesome feature without having to find it somewhere else. So there is still a lot of individual work that the students will do with CPM as long as, as well as the group work. And this is just a really nice brochure that parents got. If they, if anybody has any questions, they can feel free to see me about this and we'll get that out. Some other things that we have done is, we are still looking for crossing guards. I think we might have enough hired, but anybody who wants to sub or wants to do that, we are definitely looking for crossing guards. I also came up with a crossing guard guide. Troy, Officer A. Strike, met with the crossing guards and myself, who were employed at the time before school started, and went over what a crossing guard position is. And now we have that documented and able to hand out to any new crossing guards so that there are some guidelines for them to follow as they do their job. And then the last thing that got updated was the safety plan, the school safety plan this year. And we did add a little bit to that based on last spring's events of being under a soft hold and when we would need that information and how we will react. But otherwise, you have the plan there. Any questions?
Thank you. Mrs. Brockert.
This past month and going forward has been just completing financial reports required by our state and preparing for our new budget. As you know, like everyone announced what their enrollments were so far, so we're anticipating the 3rd Friday count. That's one major piece in redoing our revenue limit as well as our equalized value, which we should find out beginning of October. And then our general aide will find out mid-October. So just anticipating all these dates to find out additional information and readjusting our budget.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Strike.
Well, like I said, I did give my time to Kale tonight, so I just wanted to tell you a couple of things. We had a fantastic start to the school year and a great deal of credit goes to kind of the unsung people behind the scenes, the custodians, the food service staff, the secretaries, as well as our teachers and paraeducators and crossing guards and bus drivers. I mean, it's definitely a team effort to pull this off and it was, it was a really good start. I just wanted to remind people that we have a new food service director, we have a new transportation director, and we have an interim building and grounds director, so, and I'm still new. So we have a lot of, a lot of learning and growing and I really appreciate everyone's efforts as we pulled this all together. I've kind of alluded to this in the past, but we're kicking off what's going to be called the Alumni Homecoming Social. It'll be September 30th from 5:00 to 8:00 at the American Legion. And this is kind of a combination of the old alumni banquet, which has kind of fallen out in the last couple of years, and the distinguished alumni and volunteer of the year celebration. So I'm not sure I really thought this through because once I put this out on social media and in the newspapers and the calls started coming in, I realized I probably invited about 10,000 people to a party and the outpouring of responses is pretty overwhelming right now. But we are going to have the presentation at 6:00, which is the distinguished alumni award winner, and we'll release that soon. He's just an outstanding, outstanding man that everyone's going to want to meet, as well as our volunteer of the year. Another thing that I had promised the board last year when I was hired is that I was going to write the legend of the Elcat. Everyone asks, everyone that interviews, everyone that comes to Lake Mills, what's the deal about the Elcat? I've done a lot of research. I know the truth. I know the legend. And so when, when Mr., who does, who does around the corner, John McGivern was here last year filming for Lake Mills. He interviewed me and asked me about the Elcat. So I told him the truth and then I told him the legend and he said, never tell the truth again. The legend is so much better. So we're going to go with the legend. I'll present that that evening as well. And then we're going to have a live auction at 7:00 and at that time, we're going to sell, or we're going to auction off some pieces of the old gym floor. We were able to save all of the letters, so there's Lake Mills, two sets of those. We're going to sell one set this time. So there's pictures online for people to see and we have some other old memorabilia that we're going to auction off as well. And then just finally, I've shared an update of my goals for last year in preparation for you selecting your new goals and then I'll move forward with my goals for next year and the building goals will all fall online. So.
That's it?
Yep.
All right, thank you. Action items. We've got quite a few minutes here, from August 14th, August 30th, August 16th, another August 30th. I think we could take those all together.
Well, could I move to approve the minutes of the August 14th regular board meeting? The proceedings of the August 14th Finance Committee? The approval of the August 30th Facilities Committee proceedings? The approval of the August 16th and August 30th Policy Committee proceedings?
Second.
Okay, moving to second and approve all of these minutes mentioned. Any questions on those at all from anybody? All right, let's do a roll call on those.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Demperio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of vouchers and invoices? The treasurer's report. Let's do the vouchers and invoices first.
I move the board approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $3,578,885.73 for the month of August 2017.
Second.
Okay, moving to second and approve the vouchers and invoices. Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Demperio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of the treasurer's report for the month of August.
I move the board approve the treasurer's report for the month of August 2017.
Second.
Moving to second and approve the treasurer's report for the month of August. Questions on that? Roll call, please.
Robert Demperio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, that passes unanimously. Approval of short-term borrowing.
This is a document that we prepare each year in anticipation of almost opening a line of credit so that we're prepared if our income doesn't match up with the timeliness of the payout.
Well, I will move the following resolution. Approval, be it resolved by the Lake Mills Area School District Board of Education at pursuant to the provision of 67.12, Pren 8, Pren A, Pren 1, and Pren 8A, Wisconsin statutes, to Wisconsin, the Lake Mills Area School District Board of Education shall authorize a short-term line of credit not to exceed $1 million with the Bank of Lake Mills pursuant to the above law as per the provisions set up in the complete resolution document. The entire resolution will be a part of the minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Moving to second and approve the borrowing resolution. Any questions or comments on that? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Demperio?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of employee handbook.
Last month, I shared with you updates to the employee handbook and I also shared those with the LMEA leadership, the LMSBA leadership, as well as the custodial representative so that they could come forward with any questions, touch base, and everyone seemed comfortable with all of the different updates that we've done to the handbook.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the updates to the 2017-18 Employee Handbook as presented at the August board meeting.
Second.
You got it.
Mr. Demperio got the second in there. Any questions or comments on those? Went through this last time? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Demperio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of early graduation request.
So just to remind you that we are the chartering district for Jedi. So that students who complete the Jedi program at this time through open enrollment, they're actually going to receive, if they meet our requirements, a Lake Mills High School diploma. So this request comes from a student that we've actually never met. He is a Jedi student who was on track with the Whitewater School District to graduate early and now has needed to complete with us, so you have his request there and we support his finishing in January.
I move the board approve the proposed early graduate request for the Jedi virtual school student.
Second.
Moving to second and approve the early graduation request. Comments on that? Questions? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Demperio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of Head Start contract for the 17-18 school year.
Wendy and I have been working with Bob Butler, the attorney for the school district, to create a lease agreement with Jefferson County Head Start. We started with the Jefferson and Ford Atkinson contracts and then revised upon his recommendations. And so the terms and agreements are all fine with Head Start, so we'd like to have you approve this.
I move the board approve the Head Start contract for the 2017-18 school year.
Second.
Dr. Delaney got it in there. Second, moving to seconded. Questions, comments? Head Start? Okay, roll call, please.
Robert Demperio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of overnight FFA field trip.
This is for the National FFA Convention that our students go to every year. I asked Luke Wiedenfeld to get us back on track of approving those in a timely manner, so the information here is for this year's trip, which is next month, and also for next October's trip right away as well.
I move the board approve the National FFA Convention and Expo Overnight Field Trips for October 2017 and October 2018. It is understood that the board will incur no cost and will accept no liability for any funds lost for any reason.
Second.
Moving to second and approve the FFA Convention and Field Trip. Questions, comments? Great, and he's doing that. Roll call, please.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Demperio?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of Fine Arts Weekend Trip.
This is another trip that happens each year and you've already approved the one for this September. This is for 2018.
I move the board approve the September 2018 Fine Arts Weekend Trip. It is understood that the board will incur no cost, will accept no liability for any funds lost for any reason.
Second.
Any questions? Comments? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Demperio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of overnight senior music trip.
This trip happens in the off-years when students don't travel to Florida. It's just for the seniors who are in the music department and so this is for the upcoming trip.
I move the board approve the October 2017 Overnight Senior Music Trip, the music, the Milwaukee Arts Experience. It's understood the board will incur no cost and accept no liability for any funds lost for any reason.
Second.
Moving to second to approve the band trip. Any questions on that? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Demperio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that's approved unanimously. Approval of high school roof bid.
As Mr. Demperio alluded to, we have had three contractors come in and look at all of the roofs on the high school and had them reprioritize the order of which those roofs should be repaired. And the first project that we are proposing is to replace the auditorium roof. That is reflective of an incident that happened this April. The roof became detached and during a windstorm and the wind went under and if you look at the pictures, it looks like we have a domed building there. We have submitted that for an insurance claim. Do you have?
We, we're still waiting for their response.
Okay. So that is a first priority. And then the next roof that was deemed in need of repair is the hallway between the kitchen area and the commons. And so we had bids on those and we are proposing that Pioneer out of Johnson's Creek be the vendor that we use to repair these two roofs.
I move the board accept the bids from Pioneer Roofing of Johnson Creek in an amount not to exceed $36,256. For the two roofs, it is understood that any insurance claim funds would reduce this amount to be taken from the Capital Projects Fund.
Second.
Moving to second and approve the roofing for those two projects. Comments, questions?
I have one question. I didn't catch it. Was the new auditorium the roof? Or the old auditorium? The new one? New one? And I was going to ask you, Bob, on the roofs, are the, is the roof split up like it used to be where you do one roof, one part this year and one, that's so there's still A, B, C?
There's a map included in your documentation and we-
I didn't see the maps. I didn't see the maps.
And we, we have...
Is it a separate?
It is.
I didn't see it. I'll look. I looked at that.
It is the second...
Actually, owing to the different, different times of construction and building additions, they are actually pretty distinctive, separate roofs.
It's page one of the bid.
And they're all labeled, but I didn't find that map she's...
It's the first page of the document that's called bids.
Okay, roof bid?
Yep, go there, and then that. We, we have...
Oh, that one, okay.
Formalized the numbering system and the labeling system now. So, this was the document that all of the roofing companies used.
Okay. This is the new document now, the reprioritized that you talked about?
No, this is just the map of the high school roofs.
This is just identifying once and for all so everybody can agree on what the, what the respective sections are.
The 20 sections of the high school roof.
Okay, okay.
And I think it should be pointed out that, that the funding for this is coming from the budget that we approved in July. It's within, it's within that line item.
Yeah. Are we still kind of on a rotation where every year, one of these section?
As, as, as required, yes.
Okay. What would be nice to see on here would be when they were done?
That will be added to it.
Okay.
Yeah, when they were done, right, the dates. Yes.
And how long do you think it'll be before these newer schools start coming on this long-range plan and in the rotation, would you say?
I would, I would guess with probably 15 to 20 years from their construction date.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Robert DiNprio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of purchase of the Athletic Booster Soccer Track Field Concessions Stand.
So, as you know, the Athletic Booster Club has greatly assisted in the construction of the concession stand at Campus Field and also here at the high school, and we'll just shorten that to the soccer concession stand. And we've been approached to help them finish off the funding of the concession stand here. I think that we have all seen that they've given a tremendous amount of money through, since, five years now, since 2012, in both of those concession stands. And during that time, so much of their profits from their fundraising has gone to these two buildings, they haven't felt that they've been able to give students the support that they need. So, they have asked us for some assistance in that, and $26,000 would allow them to pay off this concession stand. At that time, that would become our property, and we would negotiate what happens next. But the information and the history is, is laid out there for you about that proposal.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve payment of $26,000 to the Athletic Booster Club for the soccer track tennis concession stand loan payoff with the understanding that when the concession stand is paid, the stand would then become property of the Lake Mills Area School District. Second.
Second. Rachel?
I went down a second.
Any questions, comments on that? Roll call, please.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DiNprio?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of support staff letters of assignment.
So, as you can see, that there is a list of support staff that have been hired in the last few weeks and one just today.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the following support staff letters of assignment to Ms. Dina Sobek as special paraeducator at the elementary school, Ms. April Schmidt as food service worker, Ms. Consuelo, Val Consuela as van driver, and, oh, I got it right. Ms. Amber Dabel or Dabble as crossing guard.
Second.
Second. Ms. DiNprio, second. And any discussion on that? Questions? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DiNprio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of co-curricular letters of assignment.
Staff has been really busy filling these openings, and you can see a pretty extensive list there of, I can also say that all but one of these people are district employees already.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the following co-curricular letters of assignment. Ms. Mary Carncross at middle school, co-student council advisor, Mr. Ethan Flurkey as middle school co-student council advisor, Mr. John Herman as the high school national honor society advisor, Mr. Tim Borkert as the eighth-grade volleyball coach, Ms. Inger Radl as the seventh grade volleyball coach and the high school academic team advisor, Mr. Ben Cool as the high school link leader, Ms. Kathy Rosecki as head girls track and field coach, and Mr. Dan Zesky as head boys track and field coach.
Second.
All right, second. Moved in second. Any questions on that, on those assignments? Okay, roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert DiNprio?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of gifts?
The gifts this month were several donations for new teacher welcoming gifts, and I can tell you that as we had our lunch in the park on that day, they were very overwhelmed that they were being welcomed not only by the district but also by the entire community.
I move the board accept the following donations from our generous community members. Thank them for their continued support of the students, families, and staff of the Lake Mills School District. MK Cellular Incorporated for their donation of $500 to the Lake Mills Middle School towards their PBIS efforts, and the following seven businesses for their donations to the new staff, staff welcome bags. Astolon Screen Printing for their donation of 18 LCAT t-shirts. Crystal Farms for their donation of cheese.